Now let's call the representative from Uber, Michelle Hall. And Nicholas, and from LIV, Mariana.
Good morning, Chair of Representatives and members of the Council. My name is Rachel Holt and I'm the Regional General Manager for Uber Technologies here on the East Coast. I've been working in New York for over three years and I manage about 50 markets across the East Coast and the Southern region of the U.S. As a native worker, I'm honored to have the chance to speak with this Council about the contributions that Uber has made to the transportation marketplace in New York. Uber is evolving the way the world moves. By seamlessly connecting riders and drivers through smartphone applications, Uber creates more transportation alternatives for riders and increases the business opportunities for riders. Uber was founded in San Francisco in 2009 and officially launched in New York in May of 2011 as the company's second market. Uber currently operates in more than 230 cities in 46 countries around the globe, covering nearly 63% of the global population. Uber employs 60 employees here in New York City in our Long Island City office in Queens. And our local team ensures high-quality support for both customers and riders. Uber's app technology provides an improved experience for millions of riders, life-changing opportunities for hundreds of thousands of driver partners, and a positive impact on the cities we serve. For almost four years, Uber has provided safe, affordable, and convenient way to get around the five boroughs of New York. Uber has a history of engaging with New York TLC to ensure that Uber is able to serve all New Yorkers. The company has worked in close collaboration for the last four years with TLC in establishing six TLC license bases. Over 11,000 Uber-New York affiliated partners are affiliated with one of those six bases. All partners in New York are licensed as four higher drivers and their vehicles are licensed as four higher vehicles. Uber contributes 2.5% of all trips to the Blackcar Fund and each fare includes over 8% New York State sale of black car sales packs. Uber currently offers a number of transportation options in New York. Uber Chief, which is yellow cars through TLC's e-pilot program. Uber Way, which are wheelchair accessible vehicles for New York area passengers. Uber X and Uber XL, which are low-cost commercially licensed black cars. Uber Family, which is low-cost commercial black cars equipped with car seats. Uber Black and Uber SUV, which are commercially licensed black cars with seating between four and six riders. We channel our product offerings and partnerships to the cities we serve. For example, Uber Rush is our messenger service only in New York. Each week, Uber riders do hundreds of thousands of trips across all five boroughs. Uber's top priority is connecting riders to the safest riding road. The platform offers unprecedented transparency and accountability for transportation options, delivering a safe and reliable way to get around cities. Riders can find a driver's license plate and photo and can anonymously connect to drivers through randomly generated phone number in real time. One wants the ability to track a rider's ride in real time and I often will share my ride when I'm in a new place with my mom or my husband. And only my mom really cares or responds. Riders also have the opportunity to rate their experience after every ride, providing a real-time feedback, which is a powerful incentive to ensure that there's high-quality experience in every ride. Uber creates a new marketplace for transportation services that has led to significant private property creation and reduction to unemployment in New York City. In the last four years since Uber launched in New York, Uber has transformed the earning opportunities for drivers in an industry that hasn't offered up a lot of new opportunities for drivers in decades. Uber has increased small business opportunities for New Yorkers, particularly recent immigrants and veterans. The flexibility of our app allows drivers to work when it's convenient for them because they choose their hours, earning money between other jobs, working for other companies, or working around their family schedules. The Uber platform also facilitates a safe experience for driver partners. Every transaction is cashless, which means that Uber partners never need to worry about the risk of carrying cash or making change. Accessibility is also a top priority for Uber. The Uber platform has developed and expanded access to transportation options for all, including people with disabilities. The company is committed to making a universally accessible app and is constantly innovating on its platform to meet the demand for accessibility. Uber has been lauded by the blind and visually impaired communities for their freedom of mobility. The Uber app is fully voice-over compatible and provides safe transportation options with a visually impaired that's adapted to their needs. Just this past August, Uber launched its wheelchair accessible option in New York. With this option, riders now have the ability to request a wheelchair accessible vehicle. Prior to launching this product, we met with TLC and the mayor's office with people with disabilities to ensure that the Uber platform can continue to expand accessibility options across the city. The rider experience is also crucial to what we do. And I wanted to give a moment to highlight a couple of programs we're particularly proud of. The first was passed today in Washington called Uber Family. It's a narrative I remember right now. Under this program, Uber's highest rated Uber X partners have been professionally trained and have safely installed secure a car seat. When riders request Uber Family, they can inspect not only a car seat, but a driver that's been professionally certified in order to install and safely board car seats. Families get advantage by taking almost 1,000 Uber Family trips every week. In September, we launched a new program called Uber Military, which is an initiative to bring 50,000 service members, veterans, and military spouses onto the Uber platform as driver partners. Veterans on the Uber platform today consistently rank as some of our highest rated partners and do more trips with Uber each week than non-military partners. Uber New York has the pleasure of working with over 500 Uber Military partners today. Uber serves all communities and neighborhoods with ETA-based dispatch rather than traditional location-based dispatch, ensuring that no driver is rejected because of who they are, where they live, or where they want to go. This is especially true for areas typically underserved by public transportation. Residents and visitors have options through a convenient, safe, and reliable way to move around the city. In New York, Uber's technology has allowed greater access to four higher vehicles in all parts of the city. Data and technology don't discriminate. In New York, higher percentage of trips, about 30% of Uber X trips, head in outer roads than yellow car trips, which is about 10%. 28% of Uber pickups occur in the outer cars as well. In New York, Uber embraces the local economy by partnering with small businesses to provide incentives to riders to visit their establishments. One weekend in August, Uber offered free rides to over 40 local Brooklyn businesses and did a similar promotion in November with Queens local businesses. Uber supports the community in other ways. During its ride for Cosben, each ride taken in New York during the month of March of 2014, Uber donated a dollar to a local charity of the Riders' Choice. Just last week, we worked with Goodwill to ensure that pickups took insurance point drive throughout the, or sorry, a winter coat drive throughout the city, where riders could push a button and ensure that their winter coats would be delivered to Goodwill. Thank you again for the opportunity to highlight just some of the ways that Uber is making a positive contribution in New York. We're proud of the transportation marketplace here and we look forward to continuing to provide opportunities with partners for drivers and consumers and options for New Yorkers to get around the city. With that, thank you for your time and I'll leave for a minute.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us, Chair of Representatives and hello to all the members of the Council. So we have got something that happened. My name is Jennifer Delmire and I'm the Public Policy Manager at Oral Red. We're just very proud to be here in New York City as one of the biggest transportation systems here. And we launched this summer with the guidance of the Tax Emaneze Commission with a different model here than we have in most other places because we do understand that this is a very unique market. So we did that with the Tax Emaneze Commission. We cooperated with Blackcar Base. Our model is slightly different from there where we currently do not actively affiliate large firms with drivers. Instead, we are seeking to provide options to optimize extra time in schedules that is not being used. We are open to adapting in different ways in the market because we are relatively new management. But what we want to provide is high-quality, safe, action service for New Yorkers, opportunities for drivers alongside many other transportation options that are unparalleled in the city. We certainly are not trying to replace those options, but want to be an additional option to that. Technology has transformed the transportation sector dramatically to the benefit of passengers and drivers. Major shifts in the tax and four higher vehicle industries are either new or moving to technological innovation. These industries are constantly evolving. There are versions of technology-based dispatch being used at every level. Each of the major industries shifts that happened in the market have posed challenges to the way the regulations have been set up and this is obviously no different. But ultimately, in all of those cases, the industries, the City Council, and TLC have found ways to adapt to those changes to benefit New Yorkers. And we believe that this will also be one of those things where a lot of these regulations were created in the radio dispatch universe. And we welcome changes to adapt to the new technology that everybody is currently using in the industry. We want to make sure those changes are carefully considered and we applaud the TLC's efforts on the recent bull making. Where while in some other jurisdictions, we found that more restrictions in terms of innovation have come along with, have been the primary focus. We believe the TLC did a very good process where accountability and safety were prioritized and those were taken care of in various ways. So the DAB boarding departments, there were certain accountabilities that were shifted to trip dispatch based instead of to the bases that the drivers are affiliated with. So that means that that means parody for a base whether or not it's the base that the drivers are affiliated with dispatching or another base dispatching. So we support all of those efforts and making the contributions to Blackcar Fund and the required on a trip dispatch basis as well. So we fully support the new law, the carry-through changes that are comprehensive, but that really do embrace the potential of future developments. Because there are some benefits now and there are benefits to the use of technology in various ways that we can in proceed it. And we are open to working with the TLC and working with the Council to find innovative solutions to these challenges that several of you have identified as really important issues. So accessibility and serving underserved areas of the city as well. So we can't foresee all of the developments that will come in the future. And I think Commissioner Joshi also sort of said, we don't know exactly what the future is going to hold. But we believe that there will be, continue to be a lot of, if we continue to enable a number of options for passengers, then we can make sure that concern for passenger safety is always paramount. That regulations foster competition so that customers in various areas who need different types of services have as many options as possible. And the rules should enable that type of competition and innovation and the rules that go forward, but of course, with keeping the safety and high-quality service in mind. And I think another step in that direction is also unnecessary if we are looking to, and I think Commissioner Joshi mentioned this, for some reforms in yellow taxi market, that we can also look at reforms that will eliminate unnecessary costs on certain parts of the market that might be hold over from a past time of making these rules. We appreciate the opportunity to continue talking, to come up with creative options for providing services that in a way that really complements the many options that are here.
I have a few questions. Someone to offer to you that live with Uber and also got a question. First of all, I wish the best for anyone who invests. And I also wish you good luck and anyone take a risk or invest in wanting to get a good return. And again, I have a responsibility deciding fair to everyone as a consumer. One more question is related to what you heard also we as the commission is the customer privacy. And you heard that she said that here that have been cases related to customer privacy. And I assume also that in the prior time that you were in the city, that you've been learning and adjusting, making changes, learning from your experience that you have in other part of the nation and other part of the world. So I assume that we always keep ourselves open, all of us, to put in the corporations who make changes. So what is your policy regarding customer service privacy? And how do you ensure that customer private data is being protected?
We're fully conscious of that, that our business depends on riders, the trust of millions of riders that we work with around the country. Uber has a strict policy around employee access to private data, specifically that it can only be used for business purposes. Our policy is very clear that rider driver accounts are closely monitored and audited on a regular basis. And if there's any violation of those policies, the disciplinary action is taken. We've also engaged a third party at Uber to conduct a review of our internal privacy policies and continue to make any improvements and adjustments that need to be made.
On this, I am not going to try to debate, but what I know of what's happening right now is that we are doing a full review. We've implemented new policies, but also made sure that all policies were replaced where there is limited access to the data based on, if you need access to the data based on your job functions and only for those functions. And we're continuing to, of course, take this very seriously and we're doing a review and work with outside partners to make sure that everything is being applied appropriately.
We are trying to be sure, I know that this is very critically important to us. And what we need to do to correctly improve the customer privacy is what we need to do here in the country and also in the industry. How many other questions specifically to Uber? How many Uber employees are able to access the Google where they can track passenger?
I don't have the specific numbers.
Is it true that Java applicants have been allowed to access rider information as well as reported yesterday by business insider?
That's certainly not our policy and that would be a violation of our privacy policy.
But it could happen. If we're not having it properly, like...
I can't speak to a specific report and incident. It's very clearly against our privacy policy and so if anything, if anything like that were to happen or happened, I'd actually be taken.
Are you implementing policy on the Google?
We're constantly working to amend our policies, as I mentioned. We're working right now with third-party privacy experts along with our internal privacy team to continue to improve, update, strengthen all of our privacy, all of our privacy policies.
What have you learned since the first day when you tried to land into New York City? But suddenly you found out that this city is tough and that this city, you know, as a New Yorker, like there's a number of regulations and you've been going through the whole process, you know, lawsuit, negotiation, conversation, we have been to see that you are providing the services even though we are working to make any change that we working together should be able to do to protect everyone. What have you learned since the day when you started services in the city? And you thought, you know, we can hear application, we could run. So today, when there's like a new rule applied, a KI brought by TLC and the new rule that we will continue analyzing our transport.
So I mean, Uber launched in New York over three and a half years ago and certainly we've learned a lot in that process. But I don't think that actually was our approach when we entered the market. I think Uber has been working for the last three and a half years consistently with the TLC over that time. We operate six bases in New York and we hope to continue our strong relationship with the TLC to ensure that we're fully compliant with the local rules and regulations.
Six bases are all black car?
Six bases, five are black car, one is a luxury base.
What is it?
Five are black car, one is a luxury base.
What is it?
One is a luxury base.
You agree with the brand names of the names?
Well, we need to keep New York, as I mentioned a little bit earlier. New York, we adjusted our entire model for the very unique dynamics of the New York market. This is the only model in which we are seeking to use professional drivers as opposed to casual drivers. Here, we launched, we didn't intend to try to launch the type of product we have elsewhere. We did work with my colleagues at the time, worked with the TLC Executive General's office. And the TLC advised us to buy the Blackcar base and that's what we did. So we operated Blackcar base. We comply with all the regulations and with the, all the regulations that pass through TLC, we strongly support all of those changes. And we'll continue to try to work with the existing layers in the industry to see where we can be a beneficial addition to the industry. But we've only been here for five months now. So we will continue to find the right place to provide quality service and pay attention.
Can you explain a little bit how do you distribute the benefit between the drivers and the corporation?
So the benefit, you mean of the fare on the system?
Yeah, the revenue.
Yeah, so typically about, in Uber case, about 20% fee, 20% to 25% fee on our fares depending on the service that's being offered depending on the price point and the rest goes with the driver.
20% for the rate to Uber and 80% to the budget?
Yes, that's typically the fee structure.
It's a toll, is that what you're asking?
There's a number of different fee structures that range from 20% to 25% depending on the service that's being offered. As I mentioned, we have, you know, a huge ten products in New York alone.
In which case it goes...
Can you blow it? Or can you blow it? Yes.
We, I might have to ask my colleague Seth Monle to update me on what the current percentage is. But our percentage very specifically is on the fare. And I think it's probably also between 20% and 25%. It's 20%. So 20% is a, is a fee to lift 80%. This is a fare, the base here, 20% to lift 80% of the fare and any tip, the entire tip goes to the fare.
And Uber have different application, right? Can you explain about those differences in those applications, those that have been provided free to the, in this case, to the green card and the memory and the other application where those using, using the Blackcar or there's a challenge with those applications?
Sure, so there's one application. So when you open, when you download the app, you'll actually see all the product choices within one application. But we do have a variety of different products and I'll look through them. So we have Uber Chief, which is our yellow cars provided through the Tax Emaneze e-pilot program. We have Uber Way, which is our wheelchair accessible vehicles, which are services within green area of paths. We have Uber Max and Uber XL, which is our low-cost commercial black car products, which seat between four and then six riders. Four for Uber X, six for Uber XL. We have Uber Family, which are low-cost commercial black cars, which are also equipped with car seats. We have Uber Black, which is our service that's a higher end commercial offering for four people. And Uber SUV, which is a higher end commercial black car offering for six riders. So each of our, we have Uber Rush, which is our delivery and service. So we have a wide variety of services. If, for example, you're using the e-mail, the Uber Chief e-mail way, or the e-mail product, you would request with an e-mail pilot, you would pay within that app. You'd pay the driver directly, either through a credit card or a phone with cash and each tip, you know, you would pay directly to the driver. That's different than, for example, our Uber Black product where, you know, your credit card is filed with Uber and, you know, a nap-dicot product, you would, you know, the payment would go directly to the e-mail.
As you know, we have introduced the installation of the delivery place that we've been talking about. What is your position on that?
I think anything that's going to restrict rider opportunities, you know, we're not supportive of. And I think limiting the choice for drivers, I think my understanding is that limiting the choice for drivers, that's certainly not something that we think is the best thing for driver partners.
About me?
Well, just to speak to my understanding is there's no actual draft of legislation that the director did this afternoon. Oh, we haven't, okay, we have not, we only saw the smart legislation. So we have to look at the work, we'll see that, but as we discussed, we do not operate in delivery sector and we don't have any intention of having a delivery base. So we are a black car sector participant at this point and I believe that's how it will be for now. And we don't, we don't have a specific position on the limitation in the delivery sector. But we do think that there are problems with it that we have shared with you that whenever Uber is required, there is going to be consequences. But we're very happy to consider it when we see one package that's to review the legislation. I'd love to talk about it more and be informed more informed of it in the following.
Are you fully compliant with all TLC rules and regulations? Or do you know that there's some area where you're using apps to adjust to some of the, that's with TLC rules and regulations?
Good afternoon, Chair of Representatives. I'm a little bit upset before I see you. I'll ask those questions. We have not heard from the TLC agency to some of the compliance with regard to the TLC rules and regulations or had any rules such as that by choice at the time.
Councilmember one, very funny, funny of my hands.
Happy to have you back. Let me ask just some general questions first. First, we heard from the TLC commission before. I'm just curious how New York City's Tax Emaneze Commission compares with the oversight and regulations compared to other places in the country for you guys?
No, I think Uber's model differs in the cities that we operate in around the country depending on local regulations and local jurisdictions. I think, you know, I think we have an extremely developed relationship with TLC out here in New York and I think we look forward to continue working on that.
Do you say that regulations are stricter than other places or same or is lighter?
I think, I mean, I think different jurisdictions have different policy rationales for having a different set of regulations. Certainly, the rules here are much more complicated and stricter than, you know, check in Tennessee, which took this issue off last night and for good reason.
Let me ask you a question, I'll ask this more for you. So if I drive for a delivery car service, a local delivery car service, can I also work for you guys as well at the same time? for you guys as well at the same time?
So as the rules state now, Uber drivers are able to matrix with black car bases. So we can have a number of delivery drivers who are using Uber service to supplement their income. The rules the TLC passed, across positive cash, and those will get that.
So you can, to supplement your income, work with Uber or Lyft, you agree with that, at the same time I'm driving for Kelly's Cars Service, if I choose to?
Yes, and that is a great benefit.
Do you disagree with that?
Well, I don't, this is one of the challenges of having us here together, that we're not, we don't have exactly the same model. But we have been working to make sure that we are not dispatching delivery cars. I think, you know, there's always some confusion, it's a little bit hard to always identify, but that's been something that we committed to doing with the TLC before these rules were going into effect, or before these rules were passed.
All right, so let me follow up with Uber then on this specifically, because I just want to get this straight. So I'm driving for Kelly's Car Service, happens to be a very nice one out of Queens. And I also have Uber app, can I do it at the same time? Like, if I'm not getting a call, like, if my nose business is slow, can I have my app going just in the middle of my shift, so I can only pick up as Uber ride two?
So Uber drivers are, partners are all independent contractors, and so that would be, that would be an agreement between Napdico and driver, and then Kelly's Car Service, in that particular case, and what would be allowed?
As far as you're concerned, it's fine, as long as they're operating, do you think they would, do they need permission from the car services, or?
So we don't, we don't restrict the drivers using the app, in terms of time, in terms of hours. One of the benefits that Uber platform offers to drivers is twice the flexibility, and so we wouldn't get involved in a, you know, in a particular relationship between a driver and their own service.
Right, so, and so they would be allowed, if Kelly's had a car that was out there, they would really be allowed to, even in there, even Kelly's car, conceivably, they could pick us, as far as you're concerned. I mean, you wouldn't know what car, I mean, if the cars are, follows all the, you know, it's been registered and all that, I mean, you could, they drive the car, and you see for Kelly's is the same car, and pick up someone else who calls you on Uber. That make sense?
So all.
Phone close to the mic.
So all delivery vehicles and motor vehicles have to approve, as Michelle mentioned, the TLC vehicle inspection, and you can get registered for the TLC and have TLC license plates. So if a driver is utilizing the Uber service to supplement their income, they submit to us proof that they have, they have gone through that process, and that that vehicle is approved through the TLC. And as long as the vehicle's approved through the TLC, or commercial license used, then they're able to use it.
So I can see how Kelly's wouldn't like that necessarily, but you're saying that as far as you guys, it would be okay, I mean, you're monitoring that as long as the car is appropriate for, and the driver's in appropriate drive.
And Uber drivers only go online on the application when they are available to give out requests. So they, they're not restricted one way or another through us on whether they're able to do that, but they go online when they're available and not utilizing other systems.
Okay, I represent the District of Eastern Queens, I run the NASSO Queens Board, so I walk in the dictum of destination discrimination, as I described before. I walk in Manhattan, or at the airport, I tell them where I live, they don't like that. Often, I tell them they have to do it, and they do it. But one of the nice things, I think, about the app is that you don't, you know, you don't discriminate if you don't answer that call, obviously, you're answering that call and it'll take me where I want to go. Question is, in my area in Eastern Queens, are there a lot of cars out there? I mean, if I was to sign up for Uber, I mean, if I was to look now, or in the evenings, would there be a lot of cars out by me?
There will be, I would encourage you to download the app and try it out. 28% of our rides, you know, initiate in the outer boroughs. And, you know, again, one of the reasons we offer such a seemingly complex menu of products is to ensure that we're serving, we're serving all New Yorkers, and we're serving all areas of the city.
Right. Look, I think it's an amazing business, and I miss this product, I raised this before, the idea that, you know, I believe in these other small businesses and their ability to operate within the same market, so I get concerned when you guys are able to do things that they would otherwise not be allowed to do. And because of the technology, it's sort of, and runs some things, and not in an inappropriate way for you, but just the way the system has been in place for so many years. But I do like the idea, and I have a new product line for you. See, I have a 15-year-old, and I realize this is a problem, I haven't signed up yet, but a 15-year-old, this is the new thing for him, where he decides to stay out until 12:00 or 1:00 in the morning all of a sudden, and none of his friends drive, he doesn't drive. And what happens invariably is around 1:00, I get the phone call, Dad, can you pick me up? 12:30. I'm like, ugh, I don't want to go out there. So I have had him call Kelly's Car Service, or some such service, and gone, if he has money, he does always have the money. So in my mind, it would be a nice thing to do, especially for that time you're 15, 16 year old, to stay out late, but don't drive. So Uber 15-year-olds, you know, maybe they're the next ride of mine. But it does sound like an interesting product to me in that sense, he doesn't put money, he has the money with him, I know, you know, the car is safe. Because I mean, I do too care, it's a great business model. It concerns me what we talked about with that car service, when all of a sudden, you know, I know the car services are crying, because they're going to march on kind of drivers, because a lot of them are going to you guys. And they're not a model, and Uber is offering them a lot of money at the beginning of their, you know, from the beginning, of getting encouraging drivers. I get this complaint from most car services all the time, that they can't find the drivers, they don't know where they are, they are really not coming to them. And, you know, these are small businesses that have been around for many, many years, have served our community well. And I worry about the idea that, you know, when you're a set fleet, and you have to make your ass, and be half-accessible, it's a lot harder than when you're this incoherent fleet, where they keep, you know, changing and growing, you have cars, you can send out, they're even half-accessible. But it isn't necessarily requiring all of them to be half-accessible like they are. So I think there are a lot of problems like that. Let me just switch here slightly, let me just ask about surge pricing just a little bit. Do you have the same policy on the surge pricing? I don't want to make you feel left out, but, you know, but do you have the same policy Uber does on?
I don't think generally when we're asked questions like that, I can't, I don't know what Uber's surge policy is.
Do you have surge pricing?
We have dynamic, we do have a dynamic pricing model, and there will be higher prices at certain times in order to up and dispel the point where more, if there's a lot of demand, then we're trying to encourage more drivers to get on the road. All of the extra, the way it works is that the passenger is notified, when they request a ride, they hit the button saying, request ride, before that ride is actually put through the system, notice comes up on the screen saying exactly what the additional, what the change in pricing will be. In terms of the.
That has a similar Uber, similar type.
And then any additional pricing goes directly to the driver.
Right, and one of the concerns.
And it comes down, sorry, just to be very clear, when it comes down, once the demand and supply.
Right, and then Uber, and I should say, notified surge pricing is now over, you can now, if you ask to wait until that, I know you can do that, that's great. I'm honestly against the idea of surge pricing, truly. I think it's something that's very common in a lot of places these days, and, you know, buying baseball tickets, buying other things, so, I mean, I see when the band is up, I understand that the free market can, it is a limit though, and we need to have protections, and make sure people aren't getting, you know, billed when they need it the most. So, and I also think it's unfair that regular taxis don't charge surge pricing, so they're at that disadvantage too, where, you know, they, they can't do that, so maybe that's something we can look into. But maybe, one thing I do like about what Councilwoman Reif does, is the idea of maybe capping this is something, because I understand, you could go up to how, how high, what's the highest surge price percentage-wise, what's the highest above, in average? I mean, the number 600% is quoted as a maximum we could charge, unless Miss Paul's, because she's got more publicity on it.
I mean, I don't know the exact average, I mean, typically, one surge pricing, you know, when you'll see surge pricing here in New York, you'll see one and a half times the rate, you know, one and three quarters times the rate, you're not seeing six times the rate. You know, and also, we worked this year with the New York Attorney General on making sure that we had a surge pricing policy and plan in place that he was comfortable with, and that's now a policy really across the country, and in any kind of natural disaster emergencies.
This is a fascinating industry to me, and that this whole change is really very interesting, very important to consumers. I have to stop now.
Thank you, Chair. So I want to get to something, so I, again, I want to just, I have a family that lives, a family member that's in Uber, a family member that's in, that's based that they work on, grocery, and I have seven family members, I have all three. And I just want them to make as much money as possible, as long as people are safe. But I do want to say, and I'm not making as much money as possible because this 80/20 stuff is a problem, a huge problem. I mean, if you're saying 2.5%, Uber specifically, you're saying 2.5% is going to this black car fund in the year, 2.5% of the 20%, or 2.5% of the drivers 100%? Does that make sense at all?
Sure, so the 2.5% added the 80% of the black from sales tax as well, because that was the full fare.
Okay, the full fare. On top of your 20%. And you charge for the full fare.
So we take, we take about 80%, as Rachel mentioned, 20% to 25% depending on the service for black service. And then the 2.5% goes to the black car fund and the basic.
So there is going to say 20, 2.5%?
It's a shame that we're not happy with the 5% tax discrepancy between delivery and black car service as well. We, as always, are very much in support of drivers and want drivers to turn this.
Okay, so, you know, insurance says, they say you want to have insurance because they don't use paper, they don't have people, you guys should be saving people money because you don't have the head, I guess, what do you, oh, right, thank you, overhead that they have, because you're an app, that's why apps are important, because they save people time and money this month. I wish that you guys would consider lowering your prices to the 80/20, but I think that's very important. Do you know that a delivery cab driver, if they want, they usually rent cars, because you asked that the car has been older than five years, if they want to get on the road, which means that they probably can't afford a 2010, 2011 vehicle. So they go out and lease the vehicle, the vehicle is then tied to a TLC insurance plan, which is much more expensive than what anyone else in the city of New York pays for regular car trades. I have family members that pay $400 to $500 a week for their vehicle, right? And then Uber, not Uber, yeah, Uber, didn't have an app, so they had to give you a phone, a separate phone that you had to have, and that phone costs $300 a month, I believe. They're going to be like, is it? You have a phone, if you not have a phone, that has the app on it, that's separate from like my phone, I can't put the Uber app as a driver on my phone.
You can.
So what is that phone that I'm talking about, I'm making it up?
You can put it on your own phone, or there's a $10.
That's decent, right?
And it's reasonable.
All right, so it's decent.
And it's $10 a week.
It's what?
$10 a week.
My cousins tell us, $20. He might be wrong, that's.
You want to try those.
I'm going to, I'm going to let you guys handle that one. But then, so, you make $150 a day, if you're doing a good job, if you work every single day, you make, let's say, $1,050 a week. If you pay $400 a week, because the high insurance and lease on a vehicle that's private, you're paying $400 a week, you're losing money there. And you pay $210 of your $1,050 bucks to Uber as well, and you got $610 a week that you're already paying off. The phone now, you send only $10, $10 on it, or you have an app on it. The 2.5% that I haven't even calculated, you can't get tips, then you end up having someone making $300 a week off of a job that they could be making a lot of money on because of this 80/20. I do think that that's what needs to be changed. I'm not, I'm a huge fan of what you guys are doing, don't think you're being fair to drivers just yet. Only if you're using it to complement the work that they're already dealing with in other neighborhoods. That's why I have a concern with this independent clause thing, or being owned by a base or getting out to start off on it, is because there's not enough money out there just yet. And then the tip stuff is a problem, and I think you guys should change the name from surge pricing, I think dynamic pricing is much smarter, it's a better market practice. But the money is a problem. I want drivers to make money because it's a good job, when you're not helping with this 80/20, 2250, to be perfectly honest, that pricing model for the drivers.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments, and of course, this is something that we think about every day, and I can't speak to other delivery companies or white car companies, but I would assume that they have similar pricing structures, they also need to take the, the fares that the driver receives. But I will say that, no, we've looked into this thoroughly, and we've done a lot of studies to ensure that drivers are really making as much money as possible. We have Uber X partners, which is our low-cost option in the city, so not our luxury commercial drivers. They make an average of $25.17 net revenues, that's after these are taken out per hour. So, and we feel comfortable that that's a very good, viable price for receiving per hour.
So you see $25 of dollars that you're getting, is what they're getting out of?
On average, in New York, they, Uber drivers, which are the lower-cost option, are really without $25, that is an hour effort.
Do better with the money, do better. If I'm even using a bank.
We won't take that, to the stronger.
Thank you. Are there, my question is, are there any other dynamics, other than the demand that they ask, or that adds to the price thirty-two percent?
So surge pricing is about, it's about supply and demand, so, certainly there are different price points that different products start out at, or the different base prices, but the point of surge pricing is to ensure that there's equalized supply and demand on the road. As supply comes on the road, as more, as more drivers come onto the system, the price goes back to, drops back to normal. And again, everything is fully transparent in the app, and there's even, you know, there's the option to even get a notification as soon as surge pricing ends.
So is it your experience that neighborhoods and communities, is there real variance in demand, therefore, created, built differences in pricing? And so the outer boroughs, you're talking about the availability and access to, or lack thereof, and what impact has that had on that group of courses?
So there is, there's certainly a possibility for pricing to be different depending on where actually supply and demand is. It doesn't help the outer boroughs to know that there are a lot of cars that are, you know, available in Upper Manhattan, if you're trying to get a ride in Brooklyn, right, at that time. So there are geographic areas which aid to account supply and demand in real time, and I think that's one of the reasons we've been successful at being able to serve areas which traditionally haven't had a lot of transportation options.
So unless enough people come online, they're going to receive greater pricing.
And I think one of the benefits of the technology is that in the app, the driver can actually see in real time what, where there are areas where there aren't enough cars on the road, or they're more likely to get a request. And so what that does is actually, you know, if I'm a driver partner, you know, I will go to the areas in which I know, you know, I'm more likely to get a request because there is, you know, there is a supply and demand imbalance, and that's how the system works itself out, and I think that's why we're able to serve with low ETAs, outer boroughs and areas of the same, which are, which are concerned well.
So your numbers will bear that out, that there is, you know, based on that theory of strategy, that there will be equity in pricing because of that, that drivers would show up somewhere in there? Because I, I'm a councilman, however, I'm in South East Queens, and there is really not much public transportation, and no yellow or green cars, so what would be the end of that?
Our average pickup time is about in the outer boroughs or under five minutes.
And could you be able to provide some course analysis about the average trip cost in the boroughs? Is that possible? If not, maybe some time in the future?
Absolutely, and you'll see in the grand test, we do have some cost comparisons for some, for three different types of trips, so you can certainly take a look at that. I think another. Uh, I think another thing to keep in mind with regards to surge is that the, the reasoning behind dynamic pricing is to incentivize drivers to go to areas, as Rachel mentioned, that are, that have, uh, high demand but low supply at the time. Um, it's really a benefit to drivers and to ensure that drivers are, are receiving trips. And because we have geographic zones in, in all outer boroughs, um, that we monitor closely and, and.
My name is, my name is Bill Zindauer of the New York Taxi Workers Alliance. We got a lot of bland assurances from the people that Uber had lived and have made many wild claims, many throwing promises. Their assurance of, uh, of privacy policy is not reassuring. But what is in practice is more important than what policy is in their rulebook. As for, uh, drivers, they claim they're making $25 an hour. Maybe that one hour they're making $25 an hour. But their claims and driver earnings are wildly exaggerated. They said they are in a productive relationship with the TLC. They were extremely impious, so to speak, to, to abide by the TLC rules that apply to everybody in this industry. Kicking a screen, we also need the Attorney General, the public defender, right? Insurance, remember to look into their insurance policy covering passenger and driver. Uh, their vehicle, they weren't going to inspect them. They weren't going to check to see if the potential driver was a, an ethical person. Could be a serial killer, they wouldn't, they wouldn't know. And worst thing of all is the so-called dynamic pricing, price surge. If a yellow cab driver charged $1, what they should, if they call Price Gallery. I assure you, come this Christmas Day and New Year's Day, if you want to go from the Upper East Side to the East Village, you probably should be prepared to spend like $300, $400 via these high-tech apps. That, uh, that's slavery, yes, protect the public. What they can charge should be regulated by the TLC. And they should abide all the rules that the yellow cab industry, the delivery cab industry have to abide by. Otherwise, it's not fair. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Trish Phillips and I'm the Executive Director of Community Protection City. It's a great privilege and honor that you're actually holding this hearing. And it's too bad that so many people left. There's a lot of people have been said that actually have been heard by both the TLC and the tech companies. And while others of us are highly regulated, Uber is not. And they use their money and their high-priced public relations experts to exploit the system. I actually agree with the number of now, it's probably the first time ever, uh, that, you know, when it comes to passengers and their rights, I think whether you call it dynamic pricing or price serving, um, I think it's, it's really an unfair system. And it's true that yellow cabs do not do that. And that is just, I mean, what we've created here is an unlevel playing field. And I think that's really what we need to, to discuss.